All right. Good evening, and I'd like to welcome you and call to order the Port Orchard City Council Meeting of August seventeenth, and the city is conducting this meeting remotely to prevent the spread of COVID. The city has provided options to the public to attend the meeting through telephone, internet, or other means of a remote access, and also provides the ability for persons attending the meeting to hear each other at the same time. We see here, and now we're to the Pledge of Allegiance. So Brandy, if you could share the flag and join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we are to the approval of our agenda, and I believe at least one modification. Councilmember Claussen?
Mayor, I request that we remove items from the agenda tonight.
Second, motion in a second to remove item seventy, and we're just not ready to move forward with that purchase. We're evaluating other options that may be better suit us. So we have a motion in a second to remove item seventy, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the item has been removed. Any other proposed amendments to this evening's agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Ray, I vote that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion of this evening's agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been set for this evening. We're to our first citizen comment period, and it's for any items that are on this evening's agenda. The second, we have a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting for those, any item not on anything which may or may not be on the agenda, and citizens are allowed three minutes to provide comments. And if you wish to provide comment to the city council at this time for items that are on this evening's agenda, please use, sorry about that, traffic outside the window here. Please reuse the raise your hand feature, and the clerk will acknowledge you and bring you in to provide comment.
Mayor, at this time, I don't see any citizens raising their hand to comment.
Okay. So we will close the first citizen comment period. And we are to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Deener, second by Councilmember Claussen to approve the consent agenda as presented. Are there any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We have no presentations, we have no public hearings, so now we're on to our business items. The first of which is item seven A, Adoption of an Ordinance, Amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters thirteen point oh four Regarding Water and Sewer CFC Exceptions. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Crocker?
At the July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one Regular City Council Committee, council approved changes to Chapter thirteen oh four, which focuses on streamlining the application process of the capital facility charges by changing the calculation to be based on ERU, as well as eliminating the distinction between residential, non-residential, for the fees and exceptions. Additionally, edits to Chapter thirteen oh four also included clarification that saves front footage fee and allow for the use of agreements in lieu of assessment in limited circumstances. The ordinance also includes an exemption of accessory uses such as accessory dwelling units, ADUs, family daycare, home occupation, or home businesses from the CFC calculation, provided that to qualify for the exemption, an ADU must be less than one thousand square feet and be served by the main principal dwelling units meter. Staff recently identified additional language changes needed to Sections thirteen oh four oh three thirty, thirteen oh four thirty-three, and thirteen oh four oh forty-one regarding partial or complete exceptions. The previously amended subsections contained and inconsistent, which has created confusion and needs to be corrected. This correction makes clear that the criteria to receive a full exception, and when a partial exception from the water and sewer CFC would be applicable. We have provided a red line draft, as well as a clean line draft of the ordinance corrections. Again, the primary focus on is on item D in both the water and the sewer. And there was one additional correction identified today that is not in this online packet. It is in the sewer section, number three, the last sentence, the ERU would be used as the basis for a credit towards the sewer capillaries charge, rather than currently the packet says water. So we will make that change to ensure that in the sewer section, we are referencing the sewer capillaries charge. And in the water section, we're referring to the water capillaries charge. And again, what this change to both D and number three, simply clarify that the criteria to receive the full exception is that the new use or implemented building improvements do not increase the ERU count. And for a partial exception, you'll be, the calculation will be performed to determine the new ERU, and we will perform the calculation for the existing ERU and provide such exemption for the existing ERU, so that the customer would only pay the delta of the larger use and receive the full exemption from their current.
Yeah, Mr. Councilmember Claussen?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to share to the council that the Finance Committee earlier this evening reviewed this document and reviewed the changes, including the amendment to the sewer capital facility charts. We were supportive of this change, so I would move to adopt an ordinance, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen dot zero four as presented and amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Claussen, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Any questions for Mr. Crocker on this matter? Councilmember Pichardi, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe just a formatting issue on the document, but under A and below, you've got I, and then you've got II, you have another II, and then III, which we just talked about, changing water to sewer. Is that duplicative to having two subsection IIs, Noah? Or is that a continuation? I just, little confusing.
Um, I will take a look at that here to see.
It doesn't change the content, but it should it be one through four or continuation of II? Perhaps that's pretty easy. Exactly, that's exactly right.
Which page of the packet are you referring to?
See, it's page three or four of the ordinance, which is page ten of the packet.
Oh, it is a scribner's error, I see. So it goes I, 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 I.
Correct, yeah.
That is a scribner's error, we'll correct that.
Exactly, no change to content, but just, thank you.
Thank you for catching up.
Other questions or comments? We cut that one, correct it in the signed version.
Yes, I had, I had a question. I understand the changes and they make sense. Um, I just had a general procedural question, which is, when you're talking about a, I guess, project getting an accessory use, such as an ADU, and if they qualify under both the conditions I and I, in that case, do they still need to apply for an exemption, an exception? Does the exemption need to apply for an exception? In the first part of, for example, page, I guess, top of page nine, or it, it talks about getting a full exception, but then we talk in B about the accessory uses getting an exemption. So my question once again is, if you're getting in a an exemption, do you still need to apply for the exception?
I would ask Nick to respond to this, because I think it would come through his shop, but I would guess that an application would have to be submitted to the city to verify the new building structure and attest that it's within the requirements of the land use, as well as it matches the intent of the water and sewer CFC code.
Yeah, I can add to that. The, you would have to go through land use and building permitting for a change of occupancy for existing structures or a new building permit in order to even be in a position to determine whether the fee applies, the CFC fee.
Right, okay, no, that's helpful, but if you are applying for an accessory use such as an ADU, and your ADU is under a thousand feet, and you're expected to use less than a hundred eighty gallons, do you still need to apply for the exception?
I don't know that that was the intent, but I'd have to look at the language more closely and figure out whether you actually have to request the exception, or whether it just is an exception.
Yeah, it seemed like it was an exemption to the exception, and that's what confused me. Because I thought, well, if you're exempt from the exception, does that mean you don't have to do anything about it? Or does it mean that you still need to go and apply for either a full or a partial exception? So, okay, I can follow up with you later, um.
I'm usually wrong, Councilmember Chang, but if you're exempted, I don't know why would you would need to provide, apply for an exception, because it was exempted, but I'll defer to the attorney.
I agree, Mr. Mayor, I think you're going out on a limb there. I think at the time of, at the time of processing the accessory use application or submittal, at that point, there will be, would be a determination as to whether you were exempt. And if you weren't exempt, you could potentially apply for some sort of other applicable exemption, but I think that, that, that follows.
It sort of does. I guess it's a technicality. It sounds like, it sounds like the applicant in that case would get the exception, but I just wasn't sure if they still needed to apply for it if they were going to be exempt from, as we call it, the CFC calculation. I was thinking, okay, you know, and I could see it either way, that's why I'm asking. On one hand, I figure if they're exempt, then they don't need to even apply for it.
Right, and that's what I was trying to articulate inarticulately, is they wouldn't be having to apply for it if they, at the outset, the city were to determine they were exempt as an accessory use.
Okay, well, thank you, all right.
I will say, from a process standpoint, whether, however it gets determined in the application process, it will be a tool to communicate between finance, public works, and DCD that this applicant is exempt or has an exception. So I would say there's an application, Nick and us can work on what that looks like. It could be a part of existing applications, and it's a box you check to verify, but there has to be some communication to the departments.
Where's my?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I've got just a minor comment. If you look at the bottom of page eight of the packet, third lineup from the bottom, it says to receive a partial or a full exception. It seems like it was important to add the word A, but at the bottom of page nine, where the same language is mimicked, the word A is missing, and I don't know if that's a strategic insertion of the word A, but I thought I would point it out.
I will defer to Mr. Crocker, who is the document, document crafter.
Uh, again, I'll take a look at the language, and if it's a scribner's error, we can correct it, but doesn't significantly change the intent, right, Charlie?
Correct it, but I think that point is well taken, and it was, it was not intentionally omitted, so that would be another amendment to that motion of an additional A in the section thirteen oh four oh four oh one A, adding a partial or a full exception.
Okay. Any other corrections we need to make? Clarifications, questions, comments? Are we ready to vote? All right, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters thirteen point oh four regarding water and sewer CFC exceptions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance has passed. We are to item seven B, Adoption of a Resolution Accepting The Funding Provided by Engrossed Substitute Senate Bill Fifty ninety-two To Assist With One-Time Cost Related to Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Related to Legislation enacted between January twenty twenty and June twenty twenty one. Crocker, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. On July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, the city of Port Orchard received funds from the Washington State totaling sixty thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. These are one-time funds allocated to offset costs generated by law enforcement and criminal justice-related legislation enacted between January first, twenty twenty, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. These funds were allocated in the state's twenty-one, twenty-three operating budget under Substitute Senate House Bill and gross Substitute Senate Bill Fifty ninety-two. The city of Port Orchard's police department have been evaluating potential uses of these funds, again, which are consistent with the legislative intent, and at this time, the police department have provided the following list of unfunded mandates, which the police department intends on using some of the funds for. Please keep in mind that this is not an exhaustive list of all the legislation enacted between January first, twenty twenty, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, and additional proposals will be coming forward. Under RCW thirty-five A eleven oh four oh, the legislative body of the code city shall have the power to accept any gift or grant for any purpose, for any public purpose, and carry out the conditions of such gift and grant, which may not in conflict with the state or federal law. Staff would recommend the city council adopt a resolution thereby approving the acceptance of the funding provided by Engrossed Substitute Senate Bill Fifty ninety-two of the Sixty-seventh Legislature, twenty twenty one Regular Session.
Councilboard Claussen?
Just, once again, I'll share with the whole council that the Finance Committee reviewed this at our Finance Committee this evening, and we're certainly supportive of it. So with that, I would move to adopt a resolution thereby approving the acceptance of the funding provided under ESSB Fifty ninety-two, Section seven thirty-nine, to assist with one-time costs related to implementation by law enforcement of legislation enacted between January one, twenty twenty, and June thirty, twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Councilmember Claussen, a second by Councilmember Ashby. I note, Councilmember Claussen, you had a question at the Finance Committee that the chief wasn't able to answer because he was having audio problems, so maybe you want to address your question now, and then I'll call on Councilmember Deener.
Well, the question was more in reference to the proposed spending, but this document tonight and our action is simply accepting the grant funding from the state. It isn't authorizing the expenditure, as Noah indicated, will be coming back later. But my question was in relationship to one of the proposed purchases to replace the beanbag gun. And the idea was is to go away from a what a powder-type propellant to an air propellant. And the question that I asked was more in information that I recently was aware of, that the state attorney general issued an opinion that the beanbag guns, as most law enforcements currently have, do not fall under the restrictions of the recent legislation, so I was just questioning that.
Um, Councilmember Claussen, my understanding is that the direction, or not direction, the information that we're obtaining from the state attorney general's office is in the form of informal letters and not a formal opinion. Formal opinions of the AGO's office do not constitute binding law. So this is an area of a lot of consternation for many, many agencies. But in legal consultation with myself and the chief and other department leaders across the state, I think the consensus remains that this is an issue that needs to be dealt with legislatively, because the law is not vague in any way. The law is plain on its face. And so absent a legislative fix, legislative intent, other issues of statutory interpretation would not be influential. It is absolutely our understanding that that some agencies are making different policy decisions related to this, but at the end of the day, I think the chief's directive to his staff is to pull those beanbag guns and to find an alternative method until there is a legislative fix due to the, the direction from that, in that bill.
Good enough for me. Thank you for answering my question.
Of course.
So, Deener?
Well, first, I wanted to say I'm happy that the state has given us, given us some money for these mandates, and I'm also happy to see what the money is being spent on. I think that's great. My question was similar, I think, to John's perhaps, but what are, what are the less lethal platforms that we're talking about aside from the alternative beanbag gun?
Chief, let you answer that.
Sure, so the way that the law is written is it has, as they're defined as military equipment, they have to be under a certain size, and they cannot be primer fired, because that's considered a firearm or ammunition. So the platforms that we are looking for are fired using compressed gas, because they're not primer fired, they're not considered ammunition. So there's point six eight caliber, which is larger than the caliber, but because that was banned in the in the bill, but because they're not considered ammunition, that size is acceptable, and you can place powder, whether it be oleoresin capsicum, which is allowed under the current laws, so not only would you have a platform that can place an impact weapon at a distance, but you can also use OC, which would provide the ability to use fewer rounds to hopefully incapacitate somebody. Then if cops speak, or I can try and help a little bit more.
No, it sounds like you don't have anything specifically picked out yet. I just was curious if.
But we have identified some specifics, yes. It's a FN three oh three, if that helps.
No, I think, I think your explanation is good enough for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, and try not to ask the chief any questions, he's just going to confuse us. All right, hearing none, you'll be voting on the Adoption of a Resolution Accepting The Funding Approved by the, by Engrossed Substitute Senate Bill Fifty twenty-nine To Assist With One-Time Costs Related to Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice-Related Legislation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution has passed. We're to item C, our last business item, I believe. Yeah. Adoption of a Resolution Accepting the American Rescue Plan, also known as ARPA funds. We couldn't say, ARPA, coronavirus state and local physical recovery funds. Mr. Crocker?
Thank you, Mayor. On May twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, the city of Port Orchard was notified it was designated as a principal city in metropolitan statistical area. This determination meant city portage's classification would be considered as an entitlement city under the ARPA. As such, the city would be eligible for a total of two point eight two one million dollars distributed in two even divided, evenly divided tranches over two years. On June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, the city was notified, its application was accepted as complete, and would be receiving a payment in the amount of one million four hundred and ten thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan. The city of Port Orchard has talked about this with, with council and the mayor and then the team, and we have been directed to focus on item number five as one of the eligible expense categories. We have public health, negative economic impact services to disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay, and then infrastructure. And so the city staff are currently focusing on the infrastructure for the use of these funds. And at its present moment, we are exploring getting an RFP out for the inter-tie design project only, which is water project number seven and number eight in the water comp plan. Once public works goes through that process to develop the RP, and we receive bids back. At that time, we will bring back the contract and award, and at that time, we will obligate that portion of the ARPA funds for those design costs. We also have other projects in need of funding, such as well Levin and Marina Pump Station, which will also bring back contracts at a later date. So the resolution tonight is very similar to the last one, in that we are just asking the city council to accept this money and all the conditions that apply to it, and future council meetings will bring forward expenditure requests and contracts to spend the funds. So with that, staff would recommend that city council adopt a resolution thereby approving the acceptance of a grant from the American Rescue Plan coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of two million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand and seventy-eight dollars.
Councilboard Claussen?
Mr. Mayor, I will defer to Sean, he had his hand up as well, so. Before Sean speaks, if you would.
No pride of motion making.
This was reviewed by the Finance Committee also, and we're supportive of it. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, John. I moved to adopt a resolution thereby approving the acceptance of a grant from the American Rescue Plan coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of two million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand seventy-eight dollars to be later appropriated by the council to pay for eligible expenses as consistent and compliant with the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pichardi, a second by Councilmember Claussen. Do you have any questions about regarding the acceptance of these funds? Councilmember Ashby, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to say I'm very much in agreement of accepting these funds. The other thing we're accepting are all of the rules and regulations and certifications that come with funds. And we can't lose sight of that. It's not just the money or how we're going to spend it, it's all of the other documentation and certifications we have to make, and I'm supported because I believe we can accomplish those things and use this for the betterment of our citizens.
You're absolutely correct, and we take that very seriously, because if we don't document and account for these dollars properly, this grant turns into a short-term loan that's due immediately, and that's a bad thing. Councilmember Deener?
I want to give credit where credit is due, and that's to you, Mr. Mayor, for staying involved in this and being part of the driver behind this and helping the city get this. I think it's great, and I like that we are putting it to infrastructure, which is, you know, helping us to slowly but surely catch up with our population. And I support this and look forward to next steps on it.
Thank you for your kind words. Other questions or comments? Right, you'll be voting on an adoption of a resolution accepting the American Rescue Plan dollars. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution has passed. We've got two discussion items tonight. The first of which is the Department of Ecology requested revisions to the city's adopted twenty twenty-one shoreline master plan. Mr. Bond, this is yours.
Yes, thank you. The city council adopted its required periodic updates of the shoreline master program in March, and the, upon adoption, the city is required to transmit that to the Department of Ecology, and the Department of Ecology reviews the document and decides whether to approve it or whether additional revisions or conditional approval is warranted. In this case, we received a comment matrix, matrix with ten comments. The first nine of those comments were all pretty harmless and not difficult to implement, but the tenth comment in the matrix was something that we had fought to have changed about two and a half years ago concerning allowing some parking in our downtown on the waterfront. And suddenly Ecology was telling us that what they approved two years ago was no longer allowed, yet there hadn't been a change in state law. So Carrie and I met with both our staff person at Ecology as well as the previous staff person in Ecology that we had been talking with last year, who is now a higher level supervisor in Ecology. And we were able to work out a compromise for the downtown parking and the compromise that we came up with as documented in an email from Maria Sander Coke is that consistent with our downtown subarea plan where parking has been identified in a shoreline buffer, it would be allowed, but nowhere else in the city. So tonight, obviously, we don't have a work study meeting in August. Our hope was to just get this out of the way as a discussion item before bringing it back for council action in early September. As I mentioned, the first nine comments, I think, are are pretty clear in law what the city is required to do. And they were just really minor things that were missed in this iteration that we submitted to the state. And so again, we didn't see as staff any any issues that needed to be raised with Ecology concerning their their requested changes for those. So this is an opportunity to ask questions, to discuss, or if you want a little bit of time to digest what Ecology commented on. Feel free to read it and and get back to Carrie or I between now and our first meeting in September.
Councilmember Deener.
So I just wanted to make mention that this was discussed, presented at the land use committee as well. And I wanted to give credit to staff for their work on this. It's it's difficult to get a plan like this through without comments from Ecology. And we looked at the changes and the changes are indeed relatively minor. So don't be fooled by by the the number of them that you see. They're kind of housekeeping in a way. And I appreciate Nick and Carrie and going after surface parking on the waterfront. So I believe that this has been done well and vetted.
Thank you, Councilmember Deener for your comments. Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
I would thank Councilmember Deener for taking the words right out of my mouth. Because it came to land use, I would also like to thank Nick and Carrie because they did a nice job of going back to Ecology for the shoreline parking and it used word fighting, but at least going forward to make sure that Ecology understood what our city needs to move forward. So a great job to them. And I conclude this is a a great document and ten items from Ecology is very, very small.
The comments or questions, as as Nick pointed out, this was seen at land use. This is your first blush at it and we're going to bring him back it again. And so you've got roughly a month, almost a month before you will be taking action on it. So very opportunity for a thorough read, Councilmember Clausen, and then I'll call on Councilmember Chang.
I too am impressed with only having ten comments, but my question, I guess, is do we have any options other than accepting what Ecology tells us? Or do we just live with it?
Oh, the attorney, the attorney turned a camera on.
That's because I did. One person, thank you, Charlie.
We do not. This is one of those they say jump and we say how high situations.
Well, at least we got some little bit of latitude. So thanks, everybody. Thanks, Nick.
Councilmember Chang.
Yes, I just wanted to add that for the next discussion or when we see this again, would it be possible just to have a map so we can see what is affected in terms of the shoreline parking? It sounds like we will get what we need for the event center. And I'm just curious what other areas would have been affected without this condition.
Yeah. So I I think if you were to go look at the graphics in the downtown subarea plan that we just adopted, between West Bay and the community event center, there were pockets where we wanted to design our downtown so the buildings both faced Bay Street and the water. And on the water side, the idea was that you would actually have like behind the market, we wanted a a Warner Street, which would have a wide sidewalk, a parking lane and a travel lane where you could drive around in front of those businesses, park on the street, but still have outdoor seating in the in the future structures would actually face the water. Similarly, at the the Titus Ford site and the West Bay Center site, we had roads providing drive aisles and access to either underground or some small surface parking lots that were tucked on the side of buildings. But we really wanted to focus on both the Bay Street and the water side and try to make those attractive streetscapes in those areas rather than than trying to have a business facing the water that you can't actually drive up to or drive in front of and see. So it was really balancing the fact that our our waterfront is filled and you really can't put things below ground in any significant way and and this desire to have buildings that face multiple directions.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we're going to wrap this one up and you'll look to see that this document before you sometime in September. Second is Mr. Crocker's. It's an an ordinance amending the Port Orchard Municipal Code related to water credits and sewer and sewer CFC credits. I think we've talked about this a fair amount here lately, but Noah is going to expand on what we'll be seeing in September.
I think Noah had asked me to cover this one, so I will I will take it on. So if the the city, oh, Noah, go ahead.
No, no, that's great. That's perfect, Nick. Please continue.
All right. So about six or eight months ago, we went through a similar process for sewer because we wanted to incentivize private developers to build capital facilities that are part of our our capital facility charge for our sewer system. And so as an example, we just approved an agreement a couple of months back where a developer is building a lift station in the Ruby Creek Basin. That lift station had a certain amount of capacity and the developer is using about thirty percent of the facility. And they are getting credit for seventy percent of the the surplus capacity created by that city. So it was a tool that we wanted to incentivize private developers to help build out our infrastructure. We wanted to do the same type of system with water, but water is a little bit different in a couple of ways. But most significantly, we already have at least one water CFC credit agreement that is adopted and being used. And so that that warranted some additional language in this ordinance to to call out that that those agreements would still be honored and are are recognized under this new water CFC credit framework. The other significant difference is that the nineteen ninety eight purchase and sale agreement for the McCormick Water System included certain obligations of the city that we didn't have on the sewer side of things. And so when I mentioned in the sewer system, we we have an agreement for the Ruby Creek Lift Station where we're giving a seventy percent credit as opposed to a one hundred percent credit. In the area served by the McCormick Water System Purchase and Sale Agreement, our obligations are different and we didn't want to limit ourselves to a fixed percentage of how much we can provide credit towards towards a project that serves that particular area. So that will allow us to negotiate a more flexible agreement that takes into account the nineteen ninety eight agreement, which I expect to see a draft of that from McCormick Communities in the near future. In all other ways, the ordinance follows the same methodology and formula as the sewer credit that was already approved. And so if if you want further explanation of that, we can provide it, but I I think you should be pretty familiar with it at this point. Finally, this is, this has been to the utility committee, which recommended that this be brought to council for discussion tonight. And then tonight, we also took it to the finance committee, which which reviewed it and didn't raise any objections. So the intent here is to bring this forward to the first meeting of September for adoption unless there is any council discussion that warrants revisions or further further discussion.
Questions, Mr. Bond, on this matter? Think it's pretty straightforward. It's basically what we already did for sewer, we're gonna I'm gonna do for water. But we have to recognize that we have a standing agreement with McCormick Communities from nineteen ninety eight that we have to honor. And and so there'll be a carve out in that document to allow for that existing agreement. Okay, look forward to seeing that if the first meeting in September. So we're a little, we have a little bit of an anomaly here. We just had a meeting last week. So I'm not going to run through unless anybody objects, all of the committees, because we just met last week and only one committee, as far as I know, has an update and that would be the finance committee that met tonight. So Councilmember Clausen, do you want to give a report?
I would be happy to. And I think an awful lot of what we talked about at the finance committee were actions that we took tonight. So beyond that, though, we did our regular review of the various financial reports. The sales tax, the fund balances and the basically the recap. I will just report that the sales tax is continuing to come in strong. We're about thirty two percent, thirty three percent over budget for projections on sales tax. The refunding has also been coming in very strong. It was reported that there was some recent sales of multifamily units that elevated the funds that we've received beyond our expectations. So the refunds are also coming in very strong. We, the fund balances are all healthy, nothing really to report. We did talk about the law enforcement legislative funds, which we took action on tonight. We talked about the water CFC discussions. The American Rescue Plan funding, which we dealt with. We did talk, though, in addition to that the mayor reported a couple of issues. One was the Kitsap Health District and they have submitted a request to fund an additional position beyond what we have funded already. And it's about, if I remember correctly, twelve thousand dollar request over and above what we've already paid. And we've been increasing our contribution to the health district over the last few years pretty substantially. So we basically suggested that they incorporate that into part of their budget process as opposed to doing something. You know, as a as an annual assessment, it just needs to be incorporated into the regular budget. We also had discussions about the derelict boats and the mayor offered a some hardware and software that would help us be able to enforce this derelict boat. One of the requirements that we have to do is to verify that the vessels haven't moved on a daily basis for a period of thirty days. And as opposed to putting two police officers in our boat and going out and verifying we could do it by small addition to our drone that includes, I think, GPS instruments so that it can just fly over these derelict boats and we can record that they haven't moved that way. So more to come. We do have some funding that was budgeted for the removal of derelict boats, but not anywhere near enough. But if we move forward with this enforcement action, the mayor and the chief are just wanting to make sure that we're going to be supportive of being able to fund this removal of derelict boats, which I'm not sure that we can fund all of them, but we had some discussion about the issue of these being state responsibility DNR. And at the last legislative session, I know we were asking for additional funding to be allocated to DNR so that they could remove derelict boats. But as a result, they didn't get anywhere near enough money to deal with it. So we talked about some different ideas that we should propose next year at the legislative session that would possibly provide an ongoing dedicated funding source so that DNR could fulfill their responsibility. We also talked. Nick provided us some information from the recent census data that shows that the city of Port Orchard is growing faster than we anticipated or were aware of. In fact, I think we're the fastest growing city in the county. But he just gave us kind of a breakdown on not only the city of Port Orchard, but the other cities and their rate of growth as well as Kitsap County and their population. And then the last item is we had discussion with Noah regarding some filings, payroll findings with the IRS that there were three years that each year we were basically a day late on filing. The finance department has corrected the problem so that it won't occur again. And is dealing with the IRS the best they can to appeal the finder, the fines and or interest and penalties, I guess, that have been assessed for those two. And dependent upon which agent you talk with at the IRS, it all sounds fairly promising that they will waive, but we can only do one year at a time. And Councilmember Ashby came up with an excellent idea that as opposed to us talking and documenting our conversations that we need to reach out to either our our local CPA that we have on a retainer or working with Charlie's, if we need to go to a attorney that is versed in IRS and process just to make sure that we are moving forward smartly and that we're not putting all our eggs in the basket. And while we're waiting for that, we're incurring more interest and more penalties. So more to come on that issue. But that was essentially what we talked about at the finance committee. Did I miss anything, Beck?
Just on that annex, on the on the census data too, I just want to remember, point out too, that we annexed Annapolis area and the Bethel Corridor, which contributed to our growth also. So an element of of our growth over the last ten years was was annexation also. We are seeing tremendous growth in particular right now and that, you know, in our entire region and Kitsap County, but it is, we're definitely busy and at the city and but we also need to recognize that annexations did happen too.
Yeah, but with that said, Mayor, I don't want to diminish the fact that our population has grown in double digits where as opposed to two others in our county are in the single digit growth. So I think Paul's Bull and Port Orchard are running neck and neck as far as our rate of growth.
You're absolutely correct.
The other thing, I'm not sure Nick said this, but the census data shows us as of twenty twenty with a larger population than OFM gave us this last April. So we believe the OFM number was was low by, you know, six hundred or so population. So when we get the OFM numbers next year, we can expect a significant increase. And for those that aren't aware, a lot of our federal funding comes in based and a lot of the funding we get comes in based on population numbers. So it's very important that those be accurate.
We'll likely see a number around sixteen thousand, I think, next year when we get our population numbers. It's our best guess.
Mr. Mayor, going back to one of the earlier items that John was talking about, where are we seeing these derelict boats? Are they on anchor? Are they left at our dock?
Yeah, we can drive, drive towards Gorst and there's about fourteen of them anchored out in the bay.
And we believe many of those are derelict.
Some, some are liverboards and some are.
One of them, you can only see at low tide.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that one.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we've got about twenty five thousand remaining in the budget to deal with this and that one boat is going to cost us about thirty five thousand to raise and destroy. So you know, we're, the police are willing to and want to deal with this issue. We just wanted to confirm with the finance committee and then the council that we go through this process that we're going to need to put additional, it's about three to five thousand dollars to destroy one of these boats if we seize it. And we're, it's going to require putting some additional resources to this is is just, we're just pointing that out. We don't want to do this entire process and use those man hours that way and then be told, no, we we don't want to put any money towards getting these vessels out of out of the bay.
The three to five is when they're floating.
Right.
They're on the bottom.
Right. The other thing that Scott that we talked about is because we suspect that some of the boats have liverboards on them, that we would That we would um, target the ones that we know are derelict and have basically been abandoned in. Our waters and then we would deal with those before we dealt with the ones that had live aboard on them.
Okay, well, it may be uh, off limits to 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 do this, but it might, is it, is it worth? Going out and inspecting the lines on some of these boats that we believe to be derelict? So that if the lines are starting to fray or something like that, we can prevent a more expensive recovery?
I'll defer to the Police Department on, you know, they they go out and tag the vessels.
Um, and I know once we, once we touch it, then then that changes the game a bit, but.
Yeah, Chief, you have a response to that or?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, we don't have any safety concerns, but the bigger issue is. At what point does the cities start taking over the responsibilities of the state? We are certainly willing to do whatever work the council wants us to do, but that would be a policy decision that's that would be made by. Uh, the elected officials, we are not going to um. We don't have the the ability and again, it's the overview of the state and DNR to to do those things. We're just trying to figure out if there is a way that we can. Uh, beautify the inlet and be responsible, uh, but that's something we are working with DNR on.
All right, well, I look forward to more discussion about this. That's, I'm very interested in it.
And that whole issue of taking on the state's responsibility is certainly one of my concerns is that. You know, the state's a lot bigger than we are. They need to step up to the plate, take care of it and not put it onto our shoulders, but. Unfortunately, we're the ones that have to live with the, the problem day in and day out. So. Well, we're talking about some, possibly some different legislative actions. This next legislative session where the example I threw out was maybe they need to put a. An additional fee on the annual licensing of vessels and dedicate that fund to the derelict problem. Um, as opposed to just buying general fund dollars and put it in DNR so they can deal with it.
I appreciate the move towards more creativity because. These issues have been hammered against DNR for year after year after year with no real movement. So. I appreciate you looking at different ideas.
There are good discussions and good ideas and in the short run, though, we, hopefully we can. Increase our enforcement activity, potentially remove a few of these vessels and change, you know. Wake people up and change some behavior. That's really what the goal is. Okay, any other committees? I I know we only finance had met, anything any of the committees want to report on? Okay. I will uh, jump to the report of the mayor. I got a couple of items on the community center. I got today received uh, the draft. Amendment that the PFD Board will vote on uh, to advance our million dollars sooner versus later. And uh, they had reasonable conditions on it and um, at one point they were. Discussing a poison pill that uh, isn't in this draft document, but uh. Ultimately, the Public Facilities Board uh, meets and makes those decisions. So hopefully I. I bring back a document that is acceptable to you, uh, possibly in September uh, for you to see. Also, uh, we've made great progress on the DNR lease assignment from the bank uh, to the city. And all indications are that uh, we could possibly have that wrapped up in uh, late September. And uh, it, I believe it's possible that we could close on uh, the bank's property sometime in October if all of these uh, items. Fall together with the way I'm anticipating. I had a request and I think it was all sent to you as Councilmember two to raise, to, excuse me, to lower the flag. Uh, and um, currently our our process. Uh, and that, and that was related to the situation in Afghanistan. The request was. Our current process is to lower the flag under the order of the President and the Governor and they had not made. Uh, put an order out related to this. It is possible for us to update our code and create a process. Um, to lower the flag uh, for reasons we would deem appropriate. I do have um, concerns. Um, of of managing that and administrating it and and deeming. Um, which item, you know, if I I really, I I prefer having the President or the Governor. You know, tell us, but uh, yeah, I just wanted to float that whether there was any appetite to to change our code. Uh, to allow for local uh, local authority to to change, to lower the flag. Any thoughts on that? Seen Councilor Claus, Clausen shake his head, no. Um, no, no, okay. I just want to raise the issue since it was uh, it, the question was asked. Um, you know, we've uh, gone to this online platform and we're using YouTube as our uh. Uh, we're using Zoom to to conduct this meeting, but we're broadcasting it also on YouTube. And at our July statistics where we had eleven hundred viewers of our council meeting. Uh, in in uh, and just tonight, I think we've got three or four participants um. Observing the meeting, but you have the alternative option to go back and watch these on on YouTube, on the YouTube channel also. And we had twenty eight hundred ninety two minutes watched of our council meetings. So. People are seeing this uh, either live or even after the fact uh, on online. So. Uh, last week, the Gorst Coalition held an event at Port Orchard Subaru uh, that to increase. Awareness for um, the necessary uh, expansion and repairs to the Gorst Corridor. Councilmember Clausen and I attended in the ninety five degree heat. On that blacktop parking lot. So hopefully I got a little bit of sympathy from others that weren't there because it wasn't uh. Uh, it wasn't a refreshing breeze coming off the water, that's for certain. So, but we, we represented the city well. Um, as I'm required to do, we had some changes to our uh, human resources policy. Uh, we have a job, an accounting assistant, three position that was posted today. Heidi Drake, it was Heidi Draper's uh, position and she recently accepted the procurement specialist position. In public works. Uh, so now we've got an accounting position that's open. So. Uh, since that job hadn't been uh, looked at in a number of years, it, we always look to. Make sure that the duties and responsibilities are relevant as we, as we post those jobs. So that ends my report. So, uh, department heads, uh, Chief Brown, do you have anything to share with us this evening?
Uh, no, I just again, want to thank council for support. Um, you know, we are going through some changes and we're working through them and we're getting, getting after it, but. Uh, I I do appreciate the the support and the questions that those of you uh, who called or written, so.
Chief, do you want to just, I I think it's probably important to that you address the denial letters that you sent out. To to the festivals. I think the council members are probably aware of it, but just for the public that's watching and what. Why, why we uh, we felt that was appropriate. I totally support the decision.
Yeah, so um, as we've all kind of discussed, you know, we've modernized our planning process for these large events. Um, you know, I think we've all discussed some of my background and the experience that I've had with uh, managing large events and emergency management. Um, so for those of you that did go uh, to the uh, the cruise um, last Sunday. You probably saw the volume of people there and you probably saw a lot uh, greater police presence. And again. Um, that's to provide a a measure of public safety, but also do some PR and things like that. Um, and we did not provide um, traffic. Um, control because we wanted to be out and present. Uh, with the size of our department, half of the department plus uh, a couple extra, meaning the command staff and administrative staff were there and with the. Uh, increase in the Delta variant and the transmission numbers that we're seeing right now, there is a very real risk. Not only to the public, but also to public safety in general, if there is any type of an exposure or outbreak. Not only are um, are citizens. At risk, but if half of the department has to be in quarantine for ten days. Uh, I I can't in good conscience put us in a a circumstance like that. So again. Um, you know, we talked with the organizers and explained that and um, we have to be able to respond to. Uh, law enforcement calls for service and again, from a public safety perspective, I can't uh, advise. About having the city approve events um, that are that large with that many people standing elbow to elbow.
Thank you for providing that uh, that commentary. Appreciate it. Anything else, Chief?
No, that's it. I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Have you talked, Chief, have you talked about accreditation? Did you catch that at the last meeting? He did, I'm seeing.
So and we'll, we'll have that uh, formally taken care of in November and I'll bring that back and present to everyone.
Okay, thank you. You have anything to share tonight?
I have nothing for the council, thank you.
Ms. Archer?
I'm happy to be back and I have nothing specific to report this evening. I just wanted to convey that my uh, door. Or phone is always open, um, given that there are uh, legal changes that are occurring on a daily basis. In light of the pandemic, so feel free to reach out with questions.
Thank you. All right, Clerk Reinison.
Good evening, Council. Um, I don't have anything to report either.
Okay, Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I've got three announcements. I wanted to touch on the census data again. Um, first of all, if anybody is interested in the full data set, it's currently in an Excel spreadsheet on the OFM website, but I can. Share the link with you if you are interested in combing through it. Our actual population number that was given to us is fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty seven. And it was a thirty nine point eight seven percent growth rate and I went back and looked at the years where the annexations occurred. And I estimate that that, the growth rate, once you discount annexations, was realistically between twenty seven and thirty two percent. Um, which is right in line with Paul's bow, which grew at thirty point one six percent. So, um, pretty consistent with the other small city in our county. Um, Bremerton grew at fifteen percent and Bainbridge Island was at seven uh, pushing eight percent growth. Um, the county as a whole grew by just about ten percent uh, and added, I think, twenty five thousand residents. Um, my second announcement and um, Brandy, I don't know, it looks like you've brought Angela into the meeting. I wanted to introduce the City Council and the public to our new building official, Angela Garcia. Um, Angela previously worked for the city of Port Townsend and has extensive experience as a building official in both Nevada and California. And um, her, her camera has uh, uh, been redirected there, but she is uh.
There you go.
Now a portal, she lives in the Port Orchard zip code, so she is fully committed uh, to being here and I've just been really impressed with her since she arrived. Um, and Angela, if you'd like to say anything about yourself, uh, you can, you can take this time to do so.
Well, hi, uh, thank you, Nick. Um, I'm excited to be here and um, thanks for having me. Um, uh, just a little about myself. I have uh, over thirty five years uh, in construction experience. Um, my first twenty were spent uh, on the production side uh, of the industry and the most recent. Uh, past fifteen years have built, uh, been in uh, building and safety. Um, and so I'm really. Uh, looking forward to uh, working with everybody and hopefully I'll get to meet you guys in person uh, soon, one of these days. So. Thanks for having me.
If I'm correct, didn't you have a a short stint too in the city of Port Townsend too? Uh, in New Jersey. So she has not, not uh, Northwest isn't foreign to her, but uh, we welcome her back. So. Councilmember, are you ready? Yeah, a comment or a question?
Oh, I just was a wave of welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
And my, my final announcement, I just wanted to thank Jay. Um, most of you know that I had surgery a couple of weeks ago and. The only get well card I received was from Jay Rosa Pepe, so thank you.
Well, to be fair, not everybody knew you were having surgery uh, until it was done and you were laying on your stomach or something.
My, my phone call of counseling wasn't, wasn't enough there, Nick?
That was, that was pretty good too. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, this is digressing. Anything else, Mr. Bond?
No, that's all.
Appears not. So, all right, uh. We're to our second citizen comment period and this is for any item that the uh, public would like to address the council for. And uh, you'll be allowed uh, three minutes and uh. If you wish to address the council, please raise your hand and the clerk will acknowledge you and bring you into the meeting.
Yes, Mayor, I have one member of the public that has raised their hand and I am going to allow them to talk and that is Kaya Long.
Okay. Okay, Kaya, uh, go ahead. You have three minutes to address the council.
Yes, first I want to thank the mayor for his response in the COVID aspects. And the police chief and how he addressed certain issues. Second, I'd like to address earlier items from the Budget Committee at five thirty PM that was discussed in the Finance Committee. The racial equity aspects, the racial equity board or those positions, position that was discussed and and to be creative. I understand those who mentioned it in the council and just, and that those who disagree with its need. However, the population of South Kitsap has increased by census numbers by those that reflect our city councils. And which. Is a majority race of eighty four percent in Kitsap County. And the sixteen percent which of which reflects people of color like myself. I think we are oftentimes disproportionate in certain reflections and certain representation by our government officials and. And especially as one views a meeting like this, and I know the electorate part plays an integral part in it. But I would solely like to have the council officials try to think about this, especially think about the people of color in our community. That reflect our committee and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Brandy, do you have anyone else?
I do not.
All right, we uh, don't have an executive session planned for this evening. Is there anything for the good of the order? Councilmember Rose Pepe, go ahead.
Uh, this is kind of, I guess, our summer break, uh, since we only have two meetings during August. So I would uh, say to everybody. Have a good uh, time off and uh, enjoy before school starts up and all the other crazy things that happen starting in September.
Yep, good comment. Say, yes, we don't have a meeting next week and we'll see you back uh, the second week in September. When we resume our, our normal schedule. So anything else for the good of the order? We got out early tonight, so have a good evening and uh, we'll see you soon.
Bye, everybody.
Everyone, good night.
Good night, thanks.